Lori Fraser, how are you?
Really good. How are you?
I'm doing swimmingly. Thank you for coming in today.
Thanks for having me. I feel like we just did this.
I know, a few months back.
About six weeks ago or so.
Yeah, so this is like, and we were not talking about any election stuff in that conversation is more about, you know, community schools and other things that West Ada is doing. There was, there's new data that came out recently about reading in the state of Idaho, right? Like, reading proficiency and whatnot?
Yeah, it's pretty exciting stuff.
It is, it is.
Yeah, West Ada is killing it. We're doing great.
What are, what are the numbers? Talk to me about the numbers.
We're 81% proficiency, which means at or above grade level. That's amazing. It's the best in the state, the best in the country for large schools. So let's all just sit on that for a minute.
Wait, go back. This is third grade?
Yes.
Okay, so third grade, what was the test?
It's the ISAT.
Okay, so the, for third graders in Idaho, the ISAT test showed that West Ada is 81% proficient, which is not only the best in the state, but the best in the United States for large school districts.
Yep, for ISAT testing, it sure is. Yep. Is that amazing?
Where were we, may I ask, where were we last year?
We were also the best in the state and in the country. And then we beat it this year. And then the year before that, we went ahead and set the standard there too. So, yeah, since Angie and I have come in, and I can't take full responsibility for this, I really can't. But I do think the board has a lot to do with direction and, and support for the district as a whole and for the exec team. But yeah, we've just continued to break records every year. It's been great.
I was talking to somebody about Superintendent Debbie Critchfield, actually had a brief, very in passing conversation with her about phonics and the focus of early childhood literacy. Because early childhood literacy is just intimately tied to either problems or thriving down the line, right? I think it's like 70% of people incarcerated in the state of Idaho aren't proficient at reading. They can't read fluently, right?
Yeah, that third grade mark is a critical year.
This is a crazy one. You know what I heard the other day? What do you think about this? I, I think it was Vivek Ramaswamy, I can't remember, pronounce his name, I'm a terrible person. But he was, he was in some interview, he was like, listen, this is what we're gonna do. If you can't read by the end of third grade, you're not going to fourth grade. Like, you're gonna stay in third grade until you learn how to read.
Like, you're out of school.
No, no, they don't, it's like, yeah, you know, no, it's not like that. But he was like, listen, we are not, as a school system, going to move you on until you hit this milestone because it's so fundamental. What do you think about that?
That's interesting.
That's a hot take.
Well, and I think there's a lot of variables being held constant there. I mean, what, what are we talking about? Are we talking IEPs 504, you know what I mean? What's the, the individual challenges that they have? We have a lot of things in place to kind of help with, with what those different struggles can be. And sometimes keeping them in third grade isn't the best way to do that because they may be progressing in math and in science and, and in other ways. And I think we would all agree too, that education as a whole absolutely has to be academically focused and reading is critical. But there are other pieces to it as well. And the social aspect, the, the leadership skills you can learn, the interpersonal, you know, all the things. Those happen with maturity and with each grade. So by no means do I think we should be pushing kids through that, that aren't passing, don't take that wrong. But to what you're asking, there's just a lot of variables there that I think would have to be considered.
Yeah, you have to take into consideration more than one metric of progress academically. Gotcha. Okay, so look, you're on the board, you're running for reelection. Why are you running for reelection for West Ada?
I say this all the time and it sounds like such a line. It's absolutely, individually, outside of my family, one of the best things I've ever gotten to be a part of. To say it's fun, sounds really trivial. It, it is fun, it's rewarding, it's amazing to get to be on the front row of such a beautiful community and people working so hard in the district, outside the district, together, to make things happen, to make good things happen for kids. And I know that sounds really like a word salad. It really is the truth. It's amazing. Now, why do I want to stay on the board? Why do I think I'm relevant in that picture? Three reasons, really. First is that fiscal responsibility and, and we're killing it in West Ada. When Angie Redford and I were both elected at the same time, so I say when Angie and I both came on, property taxes were right around, I think, $237, $100,000. And right now, they're $1.47, $100,000.
Wait, back up. When you came on, there was $247?
The $237.
$237 per $100,000 valuation. So if I had, if somebody has a million dollars, it's $2,300, blah, blah, blah. Now it's down to what?
$1.47, so I'll give you a 20 and I'll cover your property taxes for the year.
If you had a million dollar valuation. Now, that was, a, a big portion of that was paying off bonds. Was that correct?
Right, and did, did I do that by myself? Heavens, no. But am I a part of the budget team? Absolutely. Am I on finance committee? Do we talk to legislators? House Bill 292, amazing, you know, that, that tax equalization, I mean, amazing to help with these things. But no, we really are priding ourselves and working hard to make sure every dollar is being used to the best it possibly can be. I, I tell people about 85% of our budget goes to salaries and benefits and that type of thing, which I think is valid. And most of that does go to teachers. I get asked that a lot too. Well, you know, how heavy is administration? No, no, no. Our, our teachers far outweigh that, as they should.
Two things. You guys run lighter as a function of number of students per admin costs in West Ada than other smaller districts predominantly because you've been able to consolidate admin, right? So like, and, and again, this is just the way the, the district is structured. This was one of the big arguments, I think, for consolidating the district, which was, look, like, we, we should just merge these districts instead of having two superintendents, two superintendent, chief of staff, all this stuff. Let's merge it and then we'll have, uh, we'll have efficiencies after that. Is that accurate?
It is. And, and I get asked this a lot too, you know, what if we had different, we really have five different cities that feed into West Ada. And what if we split off into those individual cities? And you could. I also sit as the vice president for the Idaho School Board Association, state of Idaho. And it, it's interesting to get to interact with about 115 districts in the state. And, and some of them, most of them are quite small. And there are some unique challenges that come from funding a district with 1,000 or less kids. You know, it's just, it's challenging. And there's some of them, and I do forget the name of it, but there's one that's just, just west of us a little bit. But the five of them have gotten together and kind of created a CTE program and created some things to pool their, their money. That's it, thank you.
Norm from Marsing was telling me about this. He's one of those five, right?
Yes, it's a, it's a really ingenious way to try and, and pool some money and make it go a little bit further. There's definitely an argument to be made for getting too big and what happens with that. But I would say for right now, the things that I think West Ada is really doing well with that is making sure that those professional learning days are happening, that there's cohorts within those, those small groups so that teachers and admin and appropriate principals are all talking, to keep it kind of as close as possible to those individual students and where, where those resources can best be used.
And please excuse my ignorance, you mentioned House Bill 292. Can you explain that to me?
Right, so that's one that passed three years ago. And, and what that does is that helps offset, if you will, outstanding bond and levy supplemental PFL, that type of thing, debt that a district holds, and that's for the whole state. It, it's relative to how many students you have, and so it's gonna differ from, obviously from district to district. For us this year, that's to the tune of about 35 million that comes in.
So it's, hey, you guys have this debt, you're the school district, and we're going to help offset that cost by bringing state funding to you.
Using those taxpayer dollars that the state has, reallocating them so that we don't have to go to those same taxpayers and ask for money again. Which I think is really well done by our legislature, really great use of, of a new bill.
Does that, does that happen every single year? Like, is this, is 292 like a perpetual bill that will, or does this have a sunset?
It's, it's a perpetual bill until somebody decides to change it, right? I mean, legislature can always change that every year. I, I'm not sure why they would. It, it's really worked out beautifully. It's been a huge help to taxpayers, to school districts as well. It's been great.
Yeah, the tax, I mean, obviously, West Ada has, has a very broad and, you know, a little bit more flexible tax base than, say, smaller, kind of, smaller areas and smaller districts, you know, so, but again.
More rooftops, for sure.
Yeah, and, you know, I was talking to somebody and they brought up school funding issues and that the state should be paying for more than, than they are now and that, you know, there should be a smaller burden on taxpayers. And, you know, always, you know, digging around, it's kind of like, okay, well, why, you know, like, I pay for my kid's school. And the, the articulation really was on point, which was, look, the problem with that is if you, we all rely on ourselves just to provide the education, then you're gonna have some people that have, you know, resources and capacity and be it cognitive or otherwise. And they, those kids will become like the haves. And then the, the parents that are working two jobs perhaps don't have that funding, they will become the have-nots. And Idaho Constitution obviously promises like a fair and equal, you know, education.
Public school system.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and it is important. I mean, and I think when you really sit down with people and, and ask them, do you think it's important that our youth be educated? There, there's really only one answer to that. Would you agree? I, I think most people are gonna, are gonna come to the table and say, of course, we need an educated base. You know, we talked to people about the technical trades and, and the need for that. And yeah, we have to have educated people to do that. I've talked to quite a few folks that are retired that say, you know, I, I've needed some different healthcare and medical needs and you need CNAs and you need medical assistance and you need pharmacy techs as well as doctors and everything else. So that comes from an educated populace. And that's really, public school does that as well as providing opportunity and, you know, all the things that come individually from education. But as a community, we benefit from that as well. So yeah, do we need public school? Yes, I believe that. Do we need to have choices available for families? Yes, I believe we need that too. Cause there is definitely not one mold for everyone.
Yeah. Let's, let's talk about broader, our, our programs that West Ada engages in. So from a reading standpoint in third grade, making progress, doing very well, great. There is a, a huge need for CTE within the state of Idaho, right? An enormous need. What is being done to fulfill those, fulfill those needs for our students and what can be done better?
Of that, that's one of the other reasons I'm running actually, is to continue expanding our CTE. And a big thing we've done is we just purchased a building for 12.8 million. It's right off of Locust Grove, right next to the district actually, so bussing's gonna be easy. But it's, it's a beautiful building and it's gonna allow us to increase at least 500-fold, 500-fold, 500 students, I should say, that can come into that building. New pathways will be there. I was at a, a wonderful meeting that had a lot of our industry partners there just this last week. And they were talking about what types of things should probably be looked at for pathways. Want to make sure what we put in there will actually produce jobs for kids as they come out of that, that program. I mean, it, yeah, if we just ask Lori Fraser and she says, well, welding's always really been needed, and I do think welding is still needed.
Sure.
But what if it wasn't? What if we, what if we put you through, Matt, and you get done and you're all excited to have your pathway? And the welders union says, yeah, we really don't need you. So we wanna make sure.
Could we touch on this for a second? So that, that one big concern that I think most people have broadly about public education and funding public education is relevance. It's like, you know, I was listening to this person the other day. There's this podcast called Degree Free, which I appreciate the sentiment in general, which is like, hey, look, don't just de facto go to college, right? That's a huge investment, blah, 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 blah. But the, the argument becomes, okay, high school, a contemporary American high school does nothing to prepare you, right? Now, again, some people might agree with that, I don't agree with that, it's like, but the question comes down to efficacy and relevance in education. And are you learning things? That it's like, you just learned these because and there is actually no benefit. With CTE, it's this beautiful opportunity. It's like, no, 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 man. This is literally how you hold the impact driver. Like, this is literally how you do this other thing. Having that relevance, this is one of the greatest areas where you can have relevance and, and accurate fund delivery to produce competent, functional members of society, right? Like, at least that's how I see CTE at this point. And you guys are saying, yeah, we don't just do that. Like, maybe we don't need a dump truck of like fine woodworkers and we actually need more people that are like HVAC people. People can select that, but we wanna be able to, if I'm understanding, you're saying, look, we wanna be able to know when we're working with kids for something within CTE. We are clear about the prospects moving forward. So it's like, okay, you like fine Finnish woodworking or something, just to let you know, like, that's not this crazy, like, you can learn it and we have it. But like, if you really wanna make money, it's this other thing. Is, is that an accurate statement?
Yes.
Great.
And, and definitely, and woodworking actually is in huge need right now. I mean, we know the trades in general, what is it, three to one right now as far as what's retiring and what's coming in? So there's, there's a huge, huge need. And part of that partnership with industry is what I was amazed to listen to. Hey, how can we get in and, and come into these classrooms and how can I give a talk? How can I invite these guys to come to an internship with me in high school? Well, they work through the CTE program. And for a lot of these kids too, Matt, it's, oh, I went into CNA, I got my certificate and I don't really like blood. So we figured that out in high school. And I actually talked to somebody just the other day who said their, their daughter did that. She's still very interested in medical, but went more the administrative side. So she's still working in that field, but she found out, yeah, actually I can't do nursing, I faint. You know, but I mean, that's great. And those, and those fast forward funds help, you know, all these different things that the, the state has set up, Governor Little has set up to help these kids make choices. And that, that's why I say a minute ago, choices is a huge part of this and CTE provides so much. I mean, we have 62 pathways right now. I don't know if you've gotten to tour the CT facility?
No, I've never been invited. I would love to see it.
You're invited. I would love to have you come.
Great.
It's, it's amazing to see the, the different things you can do. Cause so many people just think it's shop, you know, they, they think back to when we were in school and, and there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, our diesel, good gracious, you know, diesel mechanics are making over 100K a year. It's a wonderful profession, but there's so much more than that. I mean, you, you walk through simulators for police officers, you walk through, you know, fire trucks that we have for firefighting, CNA, and, and I mean, it's just incredible. We have ambulances, we, we do so much. We provide so many opportunities for the kids that, that piece that West Ada pushes, that career or college, or both, and both, I should say, career and college. It's just, it's so obvious and yet it's so revolutionary to think about it that way. Yeah, let me come out of school as my daughter did with her CNA, ready to go, and she's interested in physician's assistant, PA school. It's fantastic. She worked in that CNA world and went, yeah, nursing isn't quite the path. I'm a little more interested in the doctor's side of it. And that was all able to be figured out long before she started the clock with college education and, and those payments.
Thank you for all of that. Taking, there's a, a perspective of CTE education that it's this very terminal thing where it's like, you come out, you're fully formed, you move on and you go into the work world. But there's also, there are also things like the launch program that help students continue enriching and understanding or advancing skills that are absolutely functional and relevant and absolutely needed. That's the whole nature of the launch program. It's these needed workforces. Do you guys promote or, or help people explore paths to things like the launch program at CWI? Or utilizing launch program in, in that nature? So it's like, yeah, look, you have this starter skillset that we've helped you develop and that's great. And you can probably go join the, you know, union or whatever trade it is, right? Or you could go one more step towards this and here's the launch program. Because again, like, most of the time when people are really engaged in CTE, they're not thinking about, okay, let me go on for another year or two in some kind of college setting.
Absolutely. And our career counselors do a phenomenal job at our high schools with that. As well as in class, our, our students, actually, they have a day as seniors where they all apply for college in the state of Idaho. All the programs, then the scholarships and the things that are available, you know, through the government, through other outlets. They're introduced to all those different things so that they can make choices and, and sign up for them. Both my kids, I mean, Tyler definitely qualified for that, that launch program grant as well. And while he didn't use it, it was still really neat to see the process, to see how that works, to get that, that letter, if you will, that email that says you've qualified for this and know that that option is there. It was neat for him to sit back, oh, I could do this. And he hadn't gone through CT. He'd taken some classes, he didn't have a pathway, I should say, he didn't graduate with that certification. But it was still, uh, it was really enlightening. It was neat. And I wonder how many parents don't realize that option is there, that some of these things are, are what their tax dollars are going towards. Which really leads to another piece of why I'm running again, which is that communication, which is something I think West Ada can do better at. We recently just hired Michelle Edmonds, if you recognize her name, she used to be one of the anchors at Channel 6 years ago. But she's gonna head up our communications department. We're excited about that. We're, we're hopeful that we can get some of this information out better, different channels, different ways. We've had some great people working for years, but, you know, I tell people all the time, we have educators that, that work in this field. And, and knowing how to communicate on a media level, as you would know, is a different skill. So it's wonderful to bring somebody in that's had a little more experience there and is excited. She's had two kids go through West Ada School District and, and graduate, go on to college. She's, she's very familiar with it and it should help. I'm, I'm excited for people to find out more, more opportunities.
That CTE, obviously, there's a portion of the population that still very much values and wants to engage in four-year or, you know, beyond education after high school. What is being done to bolster those applications, to help students gain admission and essentially make them as prepared and advanced as possible going into a four-year university?
Into a four-year as opposed to a, a, a technical, okay, I wanna make sure I understood you correctly.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, same type of thing. So we have concurrent credit, we have AP classes. Now, my kids took huge advantage of those. I was a big concurrent credit mom. Cause you have those fast forward funds that are provided by the states, a little over 4,000. So you can take those classes as you're going to school, you know, just your daily schedule. So if your kids are in sports, if they're in activities, it isn't extra, it isn't outside of your normal, your normal four-block day in high school in our traditional schools. Obviously, you could still take CTE classes and do that type of thing, but there are so many concurrent credit classes. People sometimes don't even realize that they're in them until the teacher stands up and says, hey, you need to sign up for that. But both my kids came out of high school well into their sophomore year of college with the credits they had. That's a great way to introduce and, and get you moving forward in that four-year program. We also, like I said, career counselors meet with the kids, they talk to them about what their plans are. A lot of our AP students, those classes, talk a lot about college and, and different aptitudes and things that they're learning that they can go with. The AP classes themselves, being college-level biology classes, chemistry, you know, those fields are talked about in those classes, which really do help. And, and a lot of, I, I tour these classrooms all the time with Dr. Bub. And I've listened to a couple of these conversations. Great, kids ask. I mean, those, those back and forths really do make a difference. So it's, it's exciting.
Do you think anything more needs to be done? Or do you think there are sufficient options for people to wanna engage with that?
Well, that's a great question. And that's something that I think our communications liaison, as, as Michelle's really gonna play, can help a lot with. I mean, is there more? I think there's always more. I, I'm that person that's never really content that we're doing all we can do. Let's just be comfortable and relax. I think there's always that opportunity to improve. So could there be more? Definitely. What is it? I'm not exactly sure, but I'm sure it's out there. And so as we ask and we talk to parents and we continue to talk to industry partners, we talk to colleges and we do this routinely. Our executive team right now, actually, I just had a conversation yesterday, is working to bring some new pathways in that we're even outside of that, that group we talked to the other day. It's exciting. And when those come forward, I'm excited for everyone to know. But it's, it's just, they're always working to try to improve and do more. And I hear that from Dr. Bub all the time. Okay, here we are, this is great. What can we do more for kids? What can we do? What, what other options, what other opportunities can we offer? And that attitude, I think, spills over. I, I think it really does tell our kids, no, look for what more you can do. Definitely don't sit back and say, I'm, I'm from already in Idaho and this is a great town and nothing wrong with staying here and, and working for life. I think that's great. Actually, we love people staying in the community, but if you wanna travel the world, maybe that's something you wanna look into. If you wanna go to school in New York, maybe you wanna look into that. Let's, let's, let's find out. Is that possible? I mean, let's, let opportunity present itself and let families and kids choose what's right for them.
I dig. Talk to me about tech in school, right? So obviously, we have a digital literacy curriculum and kind of requirements coming out. And this is something from the state level saying, hey, look, we all acknowledge that our children will just necessarily have to have some capacity with technology and, and fluency as they graduate and go on to the work world. But the, the question of what that looks like, when that needs to be engaged, how it needs to be engaged and what the cost is for all of this technology is a big question. One of the big things, even, even in the Marsing School District, I talked to Superintendent Norm about. He, he was saying that they have people coming in that, that have, you know, younger students saying like, I don't want my kids staring at a screen all day long. I don't want my kid on a screen at all, you know? And again, it's gonna be very hard to do a, a programming class as a junior without a computer, right? But as a third grader, the question is, okay, what value are we getting out of this? What academic value are we getting out of this? Is this really necessary 100% to achieve our goals of, of techno- technological fluency? You know, obviously in, in senior year of high school. We are also coming to a problem with refurbishing and replacing tech that we got, you know, like five years ago. Cause Chromebooks, you know, generally only last so long. What do you see as the ROI for the technology? Are we getting academic benefit that justifies replacing and the ongoing cost of all this stuff? And, and is the current iteration of technological distribution in West Ada on point?
That's really a multi-layered question.
Indeed it is. Let's start with the first one. Academic benefit of tech.
Okay, so academic benefit, yes. In the short answer, yes. I do think there's a benefit. I think the world we live in, I, I don't think I'm really stepping outside the box too much to say, very technologically advanced. I, I laugh every day as I make a, a silly phone call to find out grocery store to order. I get online and I do my order. I mean, it, it is a part of every portion of our lives. So do I think it would be responsible to send kids out of a K through 12 education without any idea how to use technology? No, I think that would be a huge failure. So yeah, academically, it, it's a huge bonus.
But if I may say, K through 12, there's a lot there. So it's like, hey, we want the 12 to, to be streamlined with tech, but does that mean give the K tech?
Understandably. So there, there's another layer to that question, for sure. And oh no, that would look tremendously different. Again, touring classrooms. I've been in many kindergarten classrooms and I rarely see children on computers, very rarely. I see carpet time and reading, I see art. I made a bracelet with a little guy the other day, it was super cute, with beads, you know, all the things that we think of with kindergarten. Does technology get brought out occasionally? Yeah, it does. And there's times that they're introduced to it. Are these kids on technology at home at five years old? The vast majority have exposure to it. Parents have phones, I see them out all the time. Teaching a child the right way to use technology, that is a parent's responsibility. I'm a parent. And I do think that falls 100% on my shoulders. So how a, a computer gets used at home, and kindergartners aren't taking their laptops home, by the way. But in older grades, how that gets used at home, that, that's largely the setup of the home. And, and the parent, the guardian, and how they allow that type of technology to be used. Is it in a bedroom? Is it downstairs in the kitchen? You know, where is that happening? That's something that obviously West Ada can't control. We do have all kinds of safeguards on our computers. Do the kids hack through them? Yeah, they do. It's, it's actually amazing, you know, there's jobs in hacking, actually. It's, it's a, it's a skill in, in some, in some avenues. But no, for us, we're always working hard. Our digital and, and technological team does an amazing job of trying to stay on top of that. But it is an interesting world and that world exists whether we tap into it or not. So do I think it's wise to appropriately use technology in a classroom? I do. Again, having had two kids go K through 12 through West Ada, I do. And laptops were introduced during COVID. I had a ninth grader and a senior at that time. So that's when we got, got laptops full, full-time. And I definitely saw a benefit. And one of the big ones I saw was even just the turning in of assignments, that type of thing. No longer was there the paper assignments that sometimes got lost, that sometimes, you know, the dog ate my homework kinda stuff. That doesn't happen anymore. That immediate return, the ability to use online tutoring systems, varsity tutor that we have, that's available because of technology. And we learned during COVID too, that a lot of kids do homework at 2:00 in the morning. They have jobs, they have sports, they have whatever. So they have access to that that they wouldn't have had normally. So, you know, to say academically, are we seeing grades differ? You know, that there's so many things, again, that have to be held constant to say, is it just that piece? I don't know that that can be done. There's, there's a lot of variables to that. We definitely don't see them going down, you know, since we had that technological infusion. But use the correct way. I think there's a, there's a case for it. I really do.
Yeah, I, I don't think anybody would disagree with, use the correct way. This is a good thing, right? The question is, good thing for whom, right? Good thing for what end? And is the current iteration of technological, you know, policy in West Ada? For instance, if I may, the, the, there's a charter school in the area that's like a no-tech charter school, right? And it's currently, I believe, like K to seven or K to six or something. So none of those kids have tech, okay? Are those, what are they doing to either compensate for no-tech? And therefore justify not having the added expense or exposure to tech through school? And, or do you feel like, look, there is no way that they can compensate for it? You either, you have to have a Chromebook in like a third grader's hand or that person will be distinctly, you know, inappropriately trained or?
Like behind or something. The short answer to that is no, I don't think that's a requirement. Do I think that charter school sounds like a wonderful place? Absolutely. And I think for some kids, it's a perfect opportunity.
Just cause of the, just, just cause of tech policy. Could be a crazy school.
It could be. But I mean, in theory, do I think it's the right option for some kids? Yes. I mean, 40,000 kids in the area that I'm aware, yes. I, I mean, I, I could never decide where the right place for a child to land is gonna be. Only a parent can do that. Some kids are gonna do better with access to some technology, some would need none, some would need a lot, you know, it would just depend. But as far as what our teachers are doing, definitely the, the instruction, the, the training is not have computers teach children. It's an aid. It's, it's a help in appropriate situations. And that's what we, you know, police is the wrong word, but that's, that's what they're watching for. That's what they're making sure. And, you know, are there times that I'm sure that's abused? I, I'm not gonna be naive and say, oh, no, never. It's always perfect. But from what I've seen in visiting classrooms, one of the big things I've seen technology be helpful in a kindergarten classroom, I watched a teacher teaching to 11 different languages at once. Like, just let that soak in for a minute. And it was done so seamlessly and so beautifully. And it was technology that was allowing that to be possible. It was, it was iPads that were translating and helping the child learn English in that same breath. Not just translating verbatim, and so they're just staying in their native language, but learning how to convert this into English and learn math and learn science. And that is, it's just not possible without an aid, especially not with 11 languages at once.
Oh, sure, sure. And I, I don't think that's.
So there's specific cases that I, I absolutely can make the case, without it, it, it would be impossible. But yeah, is it necessary in all cases? No, 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 no. And I've talked to a number of teachers that say, you know, I, I use it minimally, especially in younger grades, you know, minimally. As you said, when you start getting into middle school, but especially high school and you're in a drafting class, you're, you know, you're on it all day long. But no, my kids' math classes and whatnot, they did a lot on paper. Yeah, and they were in AP classes, that type of thing. It just, it really depends on, on the subject, on the material, on what's happening and, you know, what that homework assignment, if you will, looks like.
Yeah, I dig, I dig. Thank you for that. You guys came out of the blocks with a cell phone policy, kind of like ahead of the curve. Talk to me about the cell phone policy in West Ada. Yeah, I dig, I dig. Um, thank you for that. Um, you guys came out of the blocks with a cell phone policy, kind of like ahead of the curve. Talk to me about the cell phone policy in West data.
Cell phone policy has been revolutionary. Um, I wish that had been there when my kids were were in school. I really do. It's changed for kids, the way they're interacting with their peers. And we've heard it over and over and over again. It is why the state of Idaho, I think, jumped on and said, yeah, we we want, they took actually our policy and I think crafted it more as to what they wanted it, but it's awfully similar. And I think that's because uh, David Benetti and and our policy committee team, Rene Azuna, people really did a great job writing it up. And and obviously, as a board, we're we're a part of that. But I I really credit our policy committee and the great jobs that they do. It it takes phones out of the classroom. It allows kids to learn without that distraction. Again, that distraction free classroom that we really do strive to do. And and cell phones is, you know, huge distraction, but it's also distraction from just being friends. It's it's that communication. It's the social piece of school that is a huge part of maturing. And we've heard from kids over and over again that have said, I have interacted more. This was last year when it first went in. I've interacted more in the last month with my peers than I have in the last eleven years. That that's sad and wonderful. You know, I'm so glad we caught it. How's that? I'm so glad that we've got something in place and that it's being so universally accepted. You know, we had.
What is the actual policy?
Well, in grade school, it's none. Uh, you you can't have them at all. In middle school, it's none. You can't have them at all. And in high school, it's during class time. Because we do recognize kids work. Um, there there's some different things when you start getting in those.
You have a need for communication.
For sure. So they have them at lunch. They have that type of thing. They have to keep them out of sight, out of mind. Some teachers have what they call a vault, which I will tell you is a really fancy shoe holder that you put on the back of your door. It's pretty cool, you know.
It's just a hanging shoe rack.
It is, but people say vault. I'm like, what are you envisioning? It's not really vault. But it's great. And and a lot, some of them take role with it. They have their names on it and it's all in. And so we know that Johnny's not here today because his cell phone isn't there, um, which really encourages them to get their phones in. And and for the most part, it's really being adhered to without a lot of pushback. You know, we had a couple of parents and understandably, if your child has a medical need, they can have their phone. You know, diabetics are using their their app to help track and a hundred percent. Um, definitely. And and if you had some major need, you could go talk to your teacher and, oh, my gosh, I need to call, you know, something's going on. Absolutely. But you think back to when we were in school and somehow we got through without having a cell phone in our pocket. We could just go to the office and call mom, or mom could call the office and have us paged. That can still happen. Those things do. But once we kind of got through a few of those concerns, which were fair, very reasonable for parents to be worried about, we really just haven't heard anything negative at all. So it's been great.
That is great.
Yeah.
Let's switch, if you if you don't mind, onto funding this district, because obviously, you know, the very low tax tax rate right now, which is great. But how do we continue retaining and uh, great teachers? How do we keep and continue funding teachers um, in a manner that as people retire and and they time out, we can attract the best and brightest? You know, people that want to be teachers and engage in West data.
That's a great question. I've asked teachers a few times and said, what what is it that really draws you to West data? Because our our neighbors um, to the east pay slightly more. So what is it that draws you to us? And and what I hear over and over and over again is leadership. He said, the culture and the the leadership that exists here, the autonomy that exists here, the the opportunities that I have here are are substantial and not to be disparaging towards anyone else. This is just what I've been told.
Sure.
That I think is a huge part of it. I think quality of your job is is a big piece for everybody nowadays. You hear that just in studies too, that dollars aren't the only thing that drives everybody to work anymore. There really is a peace of mind and a just a quality of of life, quality of work that's a huge part of that. Now, how do we, with funding? Because you're right, we're paid a little over six thousand a student, which isn't a lot. I mean, we're we're doing the best education in the country for a ridiculously low price, which is wonderful. But right, how do we maintain that? I think keeping those close relationships with our legislature is a big part of it. As we've expressed to them, hey, we we need more. We got House Bill five twenty-one, where we received a hundred and fifty-three, four million dollars to help with new construction and with significant maintenance, not small things, but huge things, which is how we bought the CTE facility. It's how we're building Independence Elementary down in Star. Star, and we're building it for about half the price that we used to build elementaries for, because we figured out a less expensive way to do that. It's going to be a beautiful school. It's just going to be a little different floor plan. And it's still going to have all the the safety features and all the good things, but just a little different floor plan, which is wonderful that that we've got people working hard to do that. But those types of things give us a little more more money, you know, a little more bang for the buck. And as far as teacher pay, you know, that is given to us by the state. Um, we have the career ladder and in different ways that we could spend a couple hours here going through, and I probably need to bring in our our CFO to help me with that, because it's a pretty complicated career ladder, if you want to know the truth. But it does allow for for different pay scales. It allows for different percentage of increase and 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 it's just, again, when I look at education, I mean, it's the community. It's the state as a whole saying, how valuable is this to us? And where do we want to see it go? Our state budget, half of it goes to education. But the other half goes to a lot of really important things. You know, we talked a little bit off air here about water rights and and different things in Idaho that are huge. And when people really start to dive into those, it's it's complicated. There's a lot to it. So I get it. I get that our legislators are balancing some pretty heavy things. And and as our community talks about how important education is and what we want, I think that's a piece of it that helps.
Gotcha. Um, gosh, we've talked about a bunch of things. My goodness. Population of the district, here's one that I've been thinking about recently. Population is decreasing. Is that a concern to you at all?
No. So, you know.
And this is something from like twenty-one all the way down.
Yeah, I mean, it's decreased by about a thousand-ish, give or take. And with forty thousand students, I think a little bit of fluctuation is fair. Um, I I've talked about this, and so forgive me if we've talked about it before, but I really, I have a lot of friends that are real estate agents, um, brokers, that type of thing. I think we all know the cost of living here is much higher than it was. I mean, to the tune of at least triple what it was just a few years ago. Starter families just aren't moving in like they once were with those young, young kids. So while we see a decrease of about five hundred this year in in kindergarten, and that's ish, you know, people come in as this, yeah, so it's ish, but about five hundred, we kind of see growth in the older grades. Um, a little bit bigger, because it makes sense if people are moving in with older kids, they're a little more established in their lives and in their jobs. They might have a caboose that's that's a second grader, but they've got a graduating senior and a middle school.
Like the whoopsie? Oh, my God. You can't say that.
Can I not say that? Okay. Hey, there's nothing wrong with a caboose.
We love you, Johnny. You're an accident.
No, no, he was just the the little blessing at the end. Yeah.
Bless him. So happy we can't travel the world now.
Hey, you just take Johnny with you. It's what we've always done. But you have kind of that little young one that's that's, you know, that's on the the tail end. And the older, where before, you look back ten years ago, we were getting families in homes that were eighteen hundred square feet that you could buy for two hundred thousand in a nice neighborhood with a backyard and a double car garage. And you were getting their oldest child in third grade. We're just not seeing that now, because that same house today is almost four hundred thousand. Coming right out of college, a lot of kids, that's just not possible. I will also say, we have a lot of people moving in that are retired. As as we know, down especially in that Eagle Star area. And I I talked to a builder here about two years ago. He took me on a tour of one of his neighborhoods. It was off of McMillan. Had about a hundred and sixty homes, as I recall. He said that they actually had some staff go through that neighborhood, knock doors and say, how many kids do you have K through twelve? In your household? So a hundred and fifty homes, Matt, how many kids do you think were K through twelve?
A hundred and fifty homes, hundred families, let's say at least forty to fifty of them were retired. Let's say the other zero starter families. So K through twelve, I'm going to say, out of the hundred homes, there were a hundred thirty kids.
Sixteen. And twelve of them were already in West data.
Yeah, but that was a fifty-five and over neighborhood.
This was a neighborhood of five hundred thousand dollar homes that, you know, when I say starter homes, they were lovely, but they were definitely what we'd call more a starter neighborhood. Yeah. And and they said, as they talked to folks, they were coming from out of state. And they were, you know, husband, wife, that were maybe thirty years old, and they either weren't interested in having kids or they're just getting going. They both had their careers they were actively working on, and that's great, but different population than we had ten, twenty years ago in this area. So as as we see some of that fluctuation, yeah, we're down a little bit. We also know that Star has approved eighteen hundred new home sites. A lot of families moved down there. We know that out south of town, we've got almost three thousand new home sites that are coming on. We are going to get more kids, no question. And we've got projections by some very, very smart people, much more so than I, that work for the district that that project that. And so far, not only have they been spot on, they've been slightly behind sometimes in the growth. The Hillsdale area, we thought we would have five or six years of growth and it filled up in two. So we do have growth. We do have kids coming and and that's exciting and it's wonderful. But yeah, we we've got good people in charge and helping us. We've got a legislature that supports us. About a third of our legislators really are from that kind of West data valley, if you will. So I feel like we do have a lot of people dialed in that know what's happening here and what those concerns are. These are their constituents as well. And so they're interested in helping and for all the good reasons too. But it's it's a community. It it takes all of us. It's that village working together.
Yeah. Um, listen, I know today's a working day and we've been, we've been chatting for a while. Um, last two that, you know, obviously, here we go. So I think you and I talked about the uh, school tax credit previously, um, House Bill ninety-three. What do you think about House Bill ninety-three?
I think in theory, it's great. I I mean, I, the tax credit itself, I think that there's the possibility that that could be helpful. I'm really a fan of school choice. I've I've talked about that. I can really only speak to West data. The way that would affect the rest of the state, I'm just not educated on that level. I I can't speak for what would help, you know, Rye, Rye Idaho. I really can't. But I I can say for West data, it it probably won't have a real big effect. We have tremendous choice already. Um, you know, different high schools, different metal, we have charters, we've got, you know, all kinds of different things uh, available. So the idea, though, of trying to give parents choice and control over their kids' futures, I I think fundamentally is a great idea. Um, is House Bill ninety-three the way to go? I I don't know. Um, I I don't know if it's going to be the the win. I don't know if there's things that need to be crafted a little better. Um, yeah, it wasn't at the table when that was being written. Um, I I definitely haven't looked into it enough to to know if there's if there's things that could be tweaked there. But I will say, generally speaking, I don't think it's a bad idea. And, you know, I have people ask me a lot about it. This isn't the first time. And and I've said, yeah, a tax credit, I I mean, maybe a good way to start. You know, how much is it going to cost? What's it going to be? I I don't know. I mean, I've heard a lot of projections. I've heard a lot of guesses. You know, I guess maybe we let it play out. I know there's there's some talk right now of, you know, maybe it's unconstitutional. Maybe it is. I I don't know. Again, I'm not an attorney. I don't know. And if it's not, then it should. Yeah, I didn't know if you knew that. I I don't even play one on TV. Come on.
But you did stay at a Holiday Inn recently.
I I did Holiday Inn Express, yes. So I can pretend at a waffle. But nonetheless, you know, again, the idea of choice for families is great. I I've lived all over Idaho. I've lived in some rural areas. I've lived in Grangeville, some other spots. And I don't know. I don't know how it works up there, to be honest. I'm not quite sure how. I don't know. But yeah, I'm I'm always supportive of people trying to help education be better.
So bottom line is, it sounds like you're saying, look, as far as the impacts on West data, you're not that concerned about it. Um, and then as far as is this the proper final iteration of the law? You're like, I you're not an attorney and you don't know how it's played out perfectly anyway. So and if, you know, people determine that it's unconstitutional, it's like, okay, great. Like, I'm not the person that should be figuring that out.
Yeah, I I tell people all the time, I I will uphold the laws of the state of Idaho. And and if they tell me something's constitutional and right, then I'll see if we, you know, how do we make that work? How do we, how do we work with that? And if they tell me it's not, then I will salute, say, okay.
Gotcha. Um, last thing, there has been, there have been notable, like, events that like sucked the oxygen out of the room. I mean, just the conversation we had the first time, which is like focused on, you know, community schools and a bunch of other things. Like, you never hear about that, because what gets dominated in the news is like, oh, somebody tried to hand, you know, bub a book at graduation. It's like, boom, everything explodes. Or even with that, that spurred from a West data going out and on its own, uh, identifying like forty to fifty books. They were like, you know what, man? I don't know that these are the right books for our school, or they're not the right books for our school with this population access, like this age range, like the twelve year old has access to. I looked this one up. It was a Handmaid's Tale graphic novel.
Graphic novel, yeah.
And like, it's not the Handmaid's Tale, the the novel, it's the graphic novel, which I looked up. I was like, that's definitely two people having sex. Like, that's for sure. Like, you could, the whole bit, right? Anybody wants to look it up, they can. Anyway, so that that took, there was a lot of like, brouhaha around that. What do you think about the major, major things that have popped up? Like the graduation thing, like the sign, like all of this stuff?
Well, it it's a great question. And and to speak to books for just a moment, you know, I I tell people, really what we do as a board is we write policy. You know, besides being Dr. Bub's boss, the five of us together, writing policy is a huge piece of that. So we try to write policy that will create distraction free learning, that will support teachers, support admins, support parents, all those good things. So when you look at the items you're listing, books, displays, that type of thing, what's distracting and what's helpful to learning? And that's that's always where I'm going to sit. Uh, my own opinion of what's right for my kids or wrong for my kids is is for me to decide. And now that they're adults, they would laugh at me and say, no, it's not. But once upon a time, it was. Um, but as far as what's right for other kids, and if we talk about books, that's kind of where we landed, was we don't have an eighteen year older section in our libraries. Our librarians don't want to do it. And there's a myriad of reasons that are appropriate that they don't. It's just not right. We have public libraries that have that. So I tell people, we have never banned a single book. That has never happened. We had one book come through the board back in November of twenty-three. Anybody's welcome to go watch that. That book wasn't banned. It was removed from circulation in the library, based on exactly what you're saying.
What's the practical difference between removing from circulation and banning?
That same book that we removed from circulation, um, little Johnny could walk in tomorrow to school with it and sit in class and read it.
Oh, it's just not being provided.
It just isn't provided to be checked out. It's just taxpayer dollars are not being used to have a book that perhaps you would not approve of your child. Like, let's bring up the Handmaid's Tale graphic novel. Like you said, you looked at it and you said, no, I wouldn't want my kids to read that. Well, we don't have.
I didn't say, I've just said, that's definitely two people having sex.
That's definitely two people having sex. Okay, pardon me. So maybe that is something you want your kids to read. I think it's great.
It it really was like, oh, this is literally like a graphic novel. And like, people, oh, by the way, like, women handcuffed with a gun muzzle in their mouth. Like, all of these different things, you're like, oh, my gosh, like, that's a thing, right? So again, people can determine whatever it is, but to say like, hey, this was just a Handmaid's Tale, just the novel. It's like, no, 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 that's not accurate. There were graphic cartoon rep- representations of of absolutely like abuse and and bad things. Well, that I would, I would say things that people should consider when considering what to allow kids to have.
Sure. And we have state law that actually tells us we need to make sure that we are creating environments in school and public education with taxpayer dollars that have appropriate reading materials that are conducive to learning and and helpful in in that educational process. So the book you're listing, I mean, that we're talking about, the board has never decided on. There's only been one. Um, Nowhere Girls was the book that we looked at. But the ones that you're mentioning, we have a process, we have a policy, and we have committees that look at them and their teachers and their members of the populace and whatnot, and they read and they decide, is this a book that maybe parents should get to make the call on? And if they decide, yeah, it's not that we're deciding it's it's horrendous or it's good. We're just, maybe it's an eighteen year older book. And I, again, because we did Nowhere Girls very publicly, there was language in that book that if it were in a movie, it would be our, for sure. And when I called the public library, guess where that book was sitting? In their adult section. So it didn't make a lot of sense to have that in our high school libraries for me, especially where IFA has sixth graders. And if we haven't one high school library, it has to be in all. And IFA has six through twelve, Idaho Fine Arts Academy.
Where the twelve with the graphic novel comes in.
Right. And so it's a little bit tricky. And again, it's not, it it's not burned. It's, this isn't some big oil drum in the back of the school.
Heading it out to the twelve.
We just don't have it in the library. But yeah, you can still get it to the public library. You can get it at Amazon. You can, you know, have it in your home library. Whatever parents choose is right for their children. I I support. That's great. So yeah, and and with displays, kind of the same idea is what is distracting to the learning environment? We have very clear state law on that now as well, more clear in this last legislative session and even clearer this summer with statements by our our Raul Labrador, our AG for the state of Idaho. And again, I I will follow state law. I I think that's my job as an elected official. We have elected officials that write state law and the populace elects them. And yeah, without that, I can't imagine being on a board, being with the school district and not wanting to teach our kids to follow state laws. So so we do the best we can to write policy that that absolutely supports those things.
One teed up here, like right at the end. Um, oh, Andy Grover. Um, so I had a, I interviewed Andy Grover over the legislative session and he's, you know, been involved as a superintendent and all kinds of different things. And these, and this was pre, I can't remember exactly when it was, but bottom line, he was saying like, look, the real struggle that public schools in Idaho and elsewhere, of course, but public schools in Idaho are engaging in, and specifically where you have where you have very, very urbanized schools or districts, you don't have a lot of conflict. Where you have very rural schools, you don't have a lot of conflict. Where you're gonna find the conflict is where the urban is meeting the rural and you have this mixing. It's like where freshwater and saltwater mix. And then it's like, there's this turmoil, right? And he said, look, the problem that schools run into is that on every side of the line, there's a high octane group of people that are ready to sue the hell out of the school. And if you lean left, you got the right people that are ready to sue. You lean right, you got the left people that are ready to sue. And this is not like, uh, that there's this force on both sides really driving schools that are paying attention. It's like, we have to go defensible, both sides, straight down the line and administer policies straight down the line, because we will get sued no matter what if we veer one inch left or one inch right. And when he told me that, I was like, this is a really impossible position. Because people, the the articulation around these things is like, what would it have hurt to just walk away from this particular issue? It's like, well, if your policy is we have to go right down the center, even if we individually have have home lives or decisions for our children that vary, we have to go right down the center. So if we're ever looking at a judge or talking to an attorney, it's like, no, no, no. Boom, boom, boom. Like, I have this straight down the center and it's equally laid out and it's equally applied and all of these different things, because that's like, love it or hate it, our schools have become these litigious battlegrounds where people want their view of culture, the the, you know, cultural sentiment, yeah, and social politics to to play out. And it's like, that's the struggle that you guys find yourself in.
I mean, yes and no. To some degree, you're right. Yes, that is a reality that. I mean, yes and no. To some degree, you're right. Yes, that is a reality that absolutely exists. No question. I would be silly to say otherwise, for sure. Is it a conversation we have routinely? Not really. We really do try to land in that place. And I'm not going to say nonpartisan, because I I don't know exactly what that means, to be totally honest with you. I think it's overused. But we try to land in that place of just trying to help kids. We say it all the time, what's best for kids in the situation, a distraction free learning environment. And sometimes that's going to sway, to use your example, to the left, and sometimes that's going to sway to the right. And it has. I mean, we have people that want to have crosses in the classroom.
Right.
And that's a distraction to the learning environment. I'm a very religious person, and that's a distraction. And I'm okay with that, because my child doesn't need a cross in the classroom to learn math. It's just not necessary. So we try to come more from that perspective of, no, just what is fair, the right word? I mean, again, that that's kind of been overused too, but what's reasonable? Maybe that's a better word.
And what's what's engaged with curriculum?
Yeah.
Right? Like you were saying, math. Like, if you don't need the cross for math, like, and if you're doing like world studies, you know, or something, and you want to, you know, whatever it might be, there might be a world where it's like, okay. And here in this book is this cross, because the, you know, conquistadors or whatever the hell, you know, whatever it might be, you know.
The don't tread on me flag is going to come up when you talk about the Revolutionary War and that type of thing. I mean, a hundred percent. And I'm a devout Christian, so I mean, understand what I'm saying. I believe in in a lot of the things that, yeah, we're talking about. But it's just not necessary. We we have, I had my children, the other sixteen hours, seventeen, depending of the day, and and we had that time to talk about what our, what was important to our family and what values and things we we treasure. And so when we look at school and we talk about this aboard, but for me personally, we talk about, how do we create an environment of learning? And then we let people go home and we let families take care of the social politics, to use that term. And I think that works. I agree with you. There's always going to be the litigious ends. But the more and more I talk with people and explain to them, yeah, that's where we're coming from. We want to let you raise your children. We want to let you decide what your community looks like and your friend groups and that type of thing. Yeah, that's exactly, because we can't. I can't, I could never look at a teacher, and I've talked to one and said this. You know, the fact that she has a hundred and eighty students in a day that come through her her classes in a high school classroom. It's not reasonable to ask he or she to be responsible for anything other than their math learning, to use the math analogy. That that's way beyond what's reasonable. And and they've said, yeah, it actually is kind of exhausting. And they still have interactions with, you know, sweet kids that need that trusted adult and they they engage in a lot of appropriate ways. And we have counselors and we have systems and all those things. But at the end of the day, no, I think if we are focusing on that distraction free learning environment that is reasonable and just and and really pushing our education piece and CTE and, you know, the different activities and the different options and choices, I think we win. And I think we provide people an environment that hopefully they feel comfortable and safe sending their kids to.
We've covered a lot of things. Do you have anything you want to add here at the end?
Just that I I tell people all the time, I mean, I could ask constantly, why would you want to do this job? It's free. You know, it's forty hours a week for you. There's a lot of other things you could spend time on. Absolutely, it's it's a position that that's a little bit on the chopping block or the dartboard, maybe. Not chopping block, but dartboard. It's it's a little bit volatile sometimes in some circles. And that is hard. So what do I say to people? Please give me the chance to keep doing it, because I love it. I don't mind that. I actually enjoy the interaction with people. I think I think as a community, we actually agree far more than we disagree. I think the the concern people have for their kids and their learning and their options largely comes from a good place, largely. And I think when we when we kind of meet people where they are and we allow people to express what they need and what they want, we get good results. And I have loved being a part of that team and I want to continue to be a part of that team.
Well, thank you for running again. Thank you for putting your, you know, hat in the ring. It's a it's a difficult thing, right? And especially considering everything in in politics today. I just, I just appreciate that we have people willing to give it a shot.
Well, thanks.
So win, lose or draw. Good luck with your campaign. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks so much.